Call this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, some of the good stuff. The first item on the agenda is Proclamations, and we have Girl Scouts Week. Whereas, March 12, 2015, marks the 103rd anniversary of Girl Scouts in the United States of America, founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas, throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas, girls discover, connect, and take action to make their local communities and the world a better place. And whereas, more than 3.2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 103 years of this American tradition with 59 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now, therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby applaud and commit Girl Scouting as made to America's Girls and proudly proclaim the week of March 8 through the 14th, 2015, as Girl Scouts Week. Councilor Kano and Councilor Bedesen were Girl Scouts. And oddly enough, when I, when my girls were Girl Scouts, I had to register as a Girl Scout to volunteer as the Cookie Dad. So I guess I was too. Yeah, that helped. Thank you, ladies. Next item on the agenda is Public Input. We have Mr. Baldwin, subject matter, the grocery receipts tax. Just want to remind you, we have five minutes, and I'll give you a, I'll try to get you a warning, I know sometimes we miss that.
James Baldwin, a county resident. This grocery receipts tax, although it would be imposed by the city, affects all of us outside the city. It would affect the people in Hachita, Buckhorn, Nembres, all over, that trade within the confines of Silver City. So the effect of this is not just local, but rather, it would be countywide. And it would also be for services that people would come up here from Lourdesburg or perhaps Deming in order to avail themselves of. I don't mind the grocery receipts tax, however, I would like to see it proposed as a referendum to the public. It's going to be hitting the public, let the public vote on it. Taxation without representation? You people are representing the public, but why don't you let the public express their views regarding this tax? If it has been adequately, if the need for this tax has been adequately explained to the public, then you should have no quarrel whatsoever on expecting a positive voter result. I believe that when the wife and I are, oh, when the wife and I are driving in town, and this is not an "I believe," I was going to another subject, but when the wife and I are driving in town, as well as anyone else that lives on either Cotty Sand Road or Bear Mountain Road, we come to the intersection, I believe is Hester. And the city really did a wonderful, wonderful job on improving that little dip right there. It's no longer bumpy, but the city employs a very, very good paving job. And it was not a patch-up job, but it was a complete, very thorough job, smooth, and it should last for quite a few years unless we get heavy trucks going over. Going on to what I was going to say, if the wife and I are in some sort of financial bind, we see where we can cut costs. I would like to see the city consider cutting costs in order to avoid this grocery receipts tax. The alternative would be to sell something. I might sell a home, or I might sell the home we live in, I might sell a car, we only have two cars, but we could sell things. The city certainly has something that they could sell that would be highly, highly priced. The city owns, and Mr. Brown walked over this property with me several years ago, 120 acres north of town in the vicinity of Bear Mountain Lodge. It's east of Bear Mountain Lodge, and suppose that fetched a paltry 5,000 acre, which I can't believe that it would, it'd be snapped up in a second at that price. But that would bring in over $600,000 right there in immediate revenue. Plus, if it were developed, there would be property taxes added to that. Of course, those would go to the county, but nonetheless, the city could sell or dispose of some of its property. I would like to see the city consider selling the property and realizing some money. I would like to see the city also put this quarter of a percent grocery receipts tax up to a referendum vote of the public. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Council Comments. Councilor Bedesen.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate the Councilor Jose Ray on his reelection. I'm very happy about that. At least he didn't have an opponent, but you know, I am pleased. It's nice to be able to continue to work with the council. I want to thank everyone who voted in the March 3 municipal election. We had 20 additional voters over 2009 when District 1 faced an opponent, I faced an opponent, and the District 3 Councilor ran unopposed. So we did get an uptick, and one of the real positive things is early voting was substantial. I mean, it exceeded the 2009 early vote, which was only 25, where you see 93 folks coming into early vote. And I think that that says something about the convenience of early voting, which is a nice, nice thing to do that folks took advantage of. I'd like to thank the voters of District 1 and thank my supporters. Yesterday, I took the oath of office and swore to be a council member and do everything to the best of my ability, and I will do so. I have done so, and I will continue to do so. So I do thank everyone who voted, and of course, folks in District 1, and everyone else who supported being outside District 1. So thank you.
Councilor Ms. Maronis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only want to remind the public that there are two upcoming meetings tomorrow. On the 11th, there will be a meeting of the public with the New Mexico Department of Transportation to again speak about the Hudson Street Highway 9 bridge closure. That will be at the Grant County Conference Center at 6:00 PM. And a week after that, on March 18, at 6:30 PM, we'll have a conversations with the Council in the Coliseum at the Westin Webster University Campus Memorial Building, third floor. This is a conversation, it's an opportunity for respectful and formative dialogue between a variety of people. And that will be a hot topic, I think, but one that I think is all people's minds, and that is vacant buildings downtown. What, how many vacant buildings are there? What are the factors that lead to buildings being and remaining vacant? And really, what can various entities do about that? So I hope you can.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Councilor Bedesen. Also, I want to mention something real quick, like a lady from F Street called and wanted me to tell you guys at the city, thank you for putting some bars on the benches there by the, by the visitor's center. About two weeks ago, I got in contact, or a senior citizen person called me, and I got in contact with him, and I went to talk to him. They are getting meals on wheels. And to make a long story short, this meal on wheel had some gum in it. It was already chewed. And I absorbed it, and I took it out, and I kept it, and I have it at my house, and it smelled of peppermint. So I'm putting the word out there for senior people to be careful, take your food. Thank you.
Councilor Kano.
I recently returned from the ADA conference that I had mentioned in the last meeting, and I just wanted to share that the, I spoke with a couple of the members of the Governor's Disability, Commission on Disability, and those two commissioners were really, really happy with Silver City. They said that Silver City is actually one of their models for accessibility, which made me very, very happy, and at the same time means we need to work even harder. So in the next couple of meetings, we'll be discussing, hopefully having a committee start to help the city work on accessibility issues. So look for that, and if you're interested in being a part of that, please just send me an email, or phone me, or whatever you'd like to do to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kano. I just want to bring up a couple things. Remind everybody that our student athletes, both here in Silver High and in Colbry, just down the road, are, seem to continue to excel. We've done real well with the, with involved basketball and wrestling, and that's what I appreciate is, especially as I age, is when I look at these student athletes, they're, you know, they're, they're learning discipline, they're, they're learning teamwork, they're, they're learning to keep their grades up, to still perform in school, so that they're actually eligible. And a lot of these student athletes are really positioning themselves to be good, productive citizens, and it's always good to see some of those successes. And I, so I'd like to congratulate those students at Silver High and at Colbry for, for doing what they've done in this past month. Now, on a, on the less fun note, on grocery receipts tax, you know, we do have this grocery receipts tax legislation on, on the table for public input, and we've received a number of good public input, some for, some against, and, and a lot of people in between, mixed. They don't want to pay for taxes, but they, they do want some of the services that we need. I do like a couple of questions that were proposed, and maybe they are worth discussing. Something that we've heard historically through various forums here in our council meetings, do we have, do we have limitations, legal limitations, on what we can do with funds from sales of property?
No, we don't have legal limitations for selling property. We do have a ordinance that says that 95% of it goes to the Translantis Base Fund, and 5% goes to the general fund, I believe, but unless the council otherwise designates at the time of sale. Now, if we sell property, that, we only have a certain amount of property, so that's a one-time inflow of cash. The grocery receipts tax is a reoccurring thing to ensure that we can provide the services every year. That's the difference between, in that situation.
So there's just a couple of discussion points on, from both sides, is that would, that is a very viable Band-Aid if we found ourselves just needing a Band-Aid for, for a particular year. We would have to take some council action to make sure that we designate it to what we needed to, if not essential.
Yeah, it has to be designated. I believe that those properties that he was discussing, that property, he was discussing already has been designated non-essential, but like I said, you know.
So that is available if we needed to. That's good to know, and it's important for the whole public to, to know this and to be aware that there's always alternatives. The referendum process, this, this particular tax, is this even available? I, I know it's just, it's just, the way the statute reads is, this has been, and this has been available to us since the early 80s. We're one of the very few communities that has not implemented this tax increment, but and I know the, the ordinance that we have to use, that's drafted by the state, does it even allow for this particular tax that we're proposing? Does it even allow for referendum?
I think you can, you can require a referendum. The, that would be at your choice. This one doesn't require a referendum. The issue with the referendum is that we've already seen the, the shortages in cash and revenues already. If we went through to a referendum, we wouldn't be able to impose the tax until January of 2016, because it has to, the ordinance itself has to be passed by three months prior to the, the date of imposition. So to be, to impose it June 1, I mean July 1, we would have to have it imposed by the end of March. So that would mean we'd go another, almost a year with shortages in revenues before we could impose it. Well, it actually would be a year, because the tax is imposed, in this case, it would be July 1, but we wouldn't actually see the revenue until September. September, we wouldn't see. So there's a two-month delay because the tax would be imposed and collected, then it's reported to the state, then they have a month to reimburse us. So we wouldn't see till February of March of next year. We wouldn't see until March of next year. So it would actually be a one-year delay to, before we saw any, any results of the tax.
That's part of, that's part of the consideration, is the timing, and as we've mentioned, currently, we're very close to budget, and that's not, that's not an issue, but the, the fact that we run such a tight budget, and we've done every effort in trimming costs, including not, not filling all the budgeted positions that we have, trying to float some of these other issues like the reimbursements, the grant reimbursements from the state, which have been taking up to a year in some cases.
Yeah, I just discussed this, and this is a new one for us, with Councilor Bedesen. We, we actually have a grant, one of the Colonias Grants from the New Mexico Finance Authority, F Street, the F Street Project. We just did a reimbursement, well, not just, we did it over a month ago. And never in the 15, 18, 19 years that I've been working with the town in the accounting department have we ever had a problem with, when we have projects through the New Mexico Finance Authority. They're sort of like a bank. They've got the money, cash on hand, so they, we submit the reimbursement to them, they pay the contractor right away, within a week. We actually were put in a situation where we did the reimbursement within three days of receipt of the invoice, we sent it to them, we got contacted a month and a half later from the contractor that they were going to impose the interest on the payment, because it was over a month before they got paid, even to the contractor, in that case. So now, we've got an interest payment of $2,100 that we've got to make to the contractor, because the contract is between us and, and the contractor, not the state and the contractor. So because of what they've done, now we've got to pay an extra $2,100. So this is a new one, but there's, these are the things on top of what we've been dealing with, with the late, having to float so many reimbursements for so long periods. It's been a, a true struggle to, to make sure that we, we get our business done.
Out of curiosity, on a referendum-based, that would just, for our tax, a referendum would just go to the city voters, correct?
Yes, yes, it would. So it would not be voted on the people at Hachita and Cliff and Nembres and Deming, Lourdesburg? It's just the residents of Silver City.
Yeah, and to date, you know, I have received a number of comments. What, what I have found from most of our residents that have talked to me, they, they do understand the dilemmas with the reimbursements, what that's created. They, they have a good understanding, or they're gaining an understanding of what the Hold Harmless is going to be doing to us on a, on an ongoing issue. And the dollar amounts that we're going to be trying to make up forever, that this doesn't even fix. And so many of them have been in favor of those services, those non-essential services that we do, like the, like funding the library and, and the museum. So far, as after I've had those conversations, they, they truly are very willing to, to pay this tax if, if they get to keep the museum and, and the library and those services that, that we provide. That would be, would have to be under consideration if we were to choose to just live with the, the Hold Harmless cuts from the state of New Mexico and decide that we were just going to do without. That is, that has been the, the trend of those comments. I'm guessing the councils, the councils have had different people comment, and really want to convey to the public that the, this notice of intent will be discussed again at the next meeting. So by all means, we definitely need all that input, good, bad, for or against. Within this next couple of weeks, we need you to come speak to not only your council, but anybody on this board with me. Speak with Alex, speak with the assistant and the, and Anita in finance. You know, talk to everybody, get a full understanding of why we're doing it, the reasons behind it, what's motivating it. And after that information has been understood, then by all means, give us your opinion on whether we should do it or not. I, I made a comment when I introduced it at the last meeting, that I fear that we're about a year too late, and we've had some, some big struggles, even, even leading our budget, even being only two, we're about 2% down from last year, 4% down from the budget. Even with that modest decline, we have been in a tremendous cash crunch because of those grant reimbursements and other things, and we've done a lot of cost savings. What is there, half a dozen positions we don't have filled? That had we not been in the reimbursement issue, we would have been able to probably man those positions. So we're doing a lot, we're, we're still providing the same services with fewer people, and, and that leads us to, as we go into budget talks, do we need to fill those positions? We may or may not. So we're, we're always considering what we, what we can do, where we can cut. But being in this cash crunch right now, I still fear and want to convey the idea that I'm not sure I want to put it off too much further and put it to a vote to the, to the town citizens. I know I've, I've received more comments, and more positive comments than we actually had people come out to vote. So I, I do know we're getting, we're getting information in that exceeds our normal voting, so I'm not sure a referendum is going to change things, though it might, though it is something that we need to consider and need to be deciding on in the, in the next couple of weeks. Does anybody else need ground, too? Councilor Bedesen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the things, when I was out campaigning, and the last weekend I was out just before the election, I had a number of folks that really understood that this NOI, what we're talking about with the 0.2, you know, well, 1/4 of 1% tax, municipal grocery receipts tax, is that it's not a solution for the Hold Harmless. It's a solution for, for what we're facing right now with not being able to do your sidewalks, pave your streets, because we don't have the cash flow. We don't really have the ability to, some of the staff in some of the departments are working on minimal staff at this point in time. And really what it is, is making sure, like the mayor had said when first introduced the NOI, is that we, we have to have a cushion, and we don't have one right now because of our reluctance to increase taxes beyond what we need. So we're not doing anything right now, really, in a sense, to correct the Hold Harmless, because we're all hoping that, that, that will be a correction. And I know that Mr. Brown's going to talk about something that has been put up on our website, or will be soon put up on our website to tell you about, the two bills that we hope will, one of them will succeed in correcting the Hold Harmless. But we'll still be in this situation, even if Hold Harmless is corrected, where we are not getting reimbursements in sufficient time and putting out cash to do things that we then, all of a sudden, for the first time in what, 18, 19 years, we're now paying a penalty for late payment. Correct?
Yes.
I mean, that's unheard of, because everybody likes, you know, they're happy that we pay so quickly here, and it just, the fact that you told me about that today really disturbed me, because that's just, it's unheard of. We just don't have the monies to be able to, to stretch them far enough to continue paying our staff, deal with a 4% decrease in our GRT, a little bit over that, and just really function to provide the services we have. We have gone, over the past six years that I've been on the council, we have cut everywhere that we can think of cutting, and that's what's made us survive the recession in the first place. And, I mean, yes, we had to raise water fees so that we were no longer subsidizing folks' water within the town, or even those folks in the county that we provide water to. We did the same with the water sewer rate, I mean, the sewer rates. So we've been doing everything we can, putting up the solar array, everything that we can, you know, the wastewater treatment plant, to really cut back and to run as lean and mean as we can while still providing the services. So I, I think that the mayor is right, I think we might be a year too late, and I'm not sure we need to, if we wait another year, we're really going to be in hot water. It could, I mean, not that we would want this to happen, but it could mean cutting back on staff.
Well, one thing that I do want to say is that we've got some really good staff working for the town of Silver City. And even though we've had to hold off on filling positions, and we've, everybody stepped up to the plate to continue to provide the best quality service that they, that we could possibly. But there's going to be a breaking point, where those people are just going to say, "I give up, I'm going to go find somewhere where I get a break." And, and, and we do need to fill those positions, so that, you know, your service may not get any better, but you're going to continue to get it, and with these good, quality employees. We've got to look at the human aspect from the employee side as well, which is important, because a lot of people are stressed. The library, the streets department, the city shop, others, the parks department, those, those are the departments that have been really hit the hardest, and those are the ones that, when we get now into March, April, those are the guys you're going to see out there every day, at all these events, helping out, being out there, making sure that your events and your parks and everything are beautiful and everything like. parks and everything are beautiful and everything like they've always been.
Well, I was going to mention that as well because it's very stressful on our employees. I mean, they're working a lot, yes, with fewer dollars and fewer employees, and still trying to provide those high-quality services we do. And I just think it's really important that folks understand that if we don't consider this and look at this realistically, there will be a breaking point amongst our employees. There will be a point where we may have to, I mean, it's a hard reality. I mean, I'm not sure what else we can cut right now because we've kind of cut down to the bone, or beyond the skin, down to the bone. And we're running as effectively and efficiently as we can with these really wonderful employees we have, but I'd hate to lose people. And I would tell you, I would hate to lose our town manager, who has been sure, along with our financial staff, that we have survived everything the way we have. So, do contact me. I would tell you, three-quarters of the folks that I spoke with prior to the election have said to me, "Please do the tax. I do not want to lose services. I do not, I do want the town to have the capability of continuing with the program of paving roads and doing, you know, many areas have worn sidewalks or no sidewalks." I mean, they want us to continue and the only way we can is with this tax. So, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I have had conversations with Mr. Brown about what he just said right now. And I have gone back because the people that have been working for the town have asked me to ask Mr. Brown, which I have. And what Mr. Brown said is true, and I have gone back to tell this to the workers. Now, getting back to, here we go again with the plastic bag ordinance. I did have a conversation yesterday at Albertson's. And some of the workers there were telling me that the people that are taking back the truck bags, okay, they're all full of dog hairs and it's gross. The paper bags are costing quite a bit of money. They asked me to mention this and I said, "Okay, I will mention it, but I don't know what can be done to go back to what was done before." The elderly people are having a hard time trying to, maybe, maybe it's because they forget, I don't know, but they're having a hard time trying to get the plastic bags. So, I said it. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Move on to any changes to the agenda? Approval of the minutes? Councillor Anderson?
Forgive me, let me put my glasses on first. I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 19th, 2015.
Mr. Ray, I second that motion stated.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the regular minutes of, the minutes of the regular meeting, February 19th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Brown?
I'll start first with some information from James. He's been working with Gerestian and JPO and they've been working on some weed and trimming at the Waterworks building. They've been doing some maintenance out there for us, which is very much appreciated and doesn't cost us. They're, you know, they're working on the butterfly garden at the, and the, with the Parks Department on a drip system for the butterfly garden at Penny Park. They're working on an amendment for the YCC project. It's a trails project that we got this year. And then, finally, there, we just got approval on our permit at the landfill to do a restore, a reuse. So, they're going to be diverting stuff that can be used at the restore, be prior to the self, I mean, before you enter into the landfill. So, they'll be able to divert that to the restore to be sold and reused again. On top of that, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Hold Harmless. Apparently, it looks like they're going to, all the Hold Harmless bills out there are going to be heard at one time at Senate Finance. They're going to wait probably till the last day or two to talk about the Hold Harmless. They're going to look at all of them at the same time. The two that I, two that are very important, that we'd really like the public to get ahold of our representatives and Senator, to please support, or one is Senate Bill 274, that's the big fix from the municipal league, that would put the local options of grocery receipts tax on food, that'd be in the city and the county store. In Silver City, it would be about a little over 3.5%, 3.6 by, I believe. And then, gives low, increases the low-income tax credit for those with the lowest incomes. And then decreases all grocery receipts, all grocery receipts taxes on all other services by an eighth of a percent. So it's actually a tax cut for most people and a tax increase for everybody as well. So it's sort of offsetting. The other one that Senator Morales just submitted last week was Senate Bill 712. And that, that bill is, would just basically increase the cutoff population for Hold Harmless from 10,000, it would increase it to 12,500. That would put us under the, under the cap, so we would be able to keep our Hold Harmless. Working on trying to fold that into whatever ends up, if it's not the big fix, whatever ends up coming out of the Senate. So please contact your representatives to support that. It actually is on the website, well, it should be shortly, if it's not already. Summary of those two bills are on the website.
Any questions? You know, just on this Hold Harmless, the interesting thing about it is, you know, the state actually, they took care of Hold Harmless with a couple of tax increases. So, the state has already, is already receiving 5/8 of a percent tax to pay the Hold Harmless. But as they've worked towards taking Hold Harmless away, they're not taking away that But adding to counties and municipalities that they can fix their side of the Hold Harmless with 3/8 each. So if every county and every city raises their tax 3/8, and we do not have that 5/8 taken away since it's, served its purpose, if it just goes to the general fund, that's no different than really a tax increase. So just food for thought, you know, an administration who has prided itself on no new taxes would probably be responsible for the highest tax increase in, probably, New Mexico history. Just a one-way of looking at it. Councillor Bedeysen?
Yeah, Alex, in response to some comments about the plastic bag ordinance, I think it's important that we talk once again about the fact that it's currently in motion, we have to, I mean, people don't like change. It's now been on the books for two months total, right? Yeah, I mean, just a little, just a couple of days over, it was January 8th that it started, and now it's March 10th. That's two months that it's, it's going. But there is a reason behind that, so that if we do go back to the single-use plastic bags, there will be an increase in our fees for the landfill because of the things that the South, the Salt and Waste Authority wanted us to do. So every individual will receive an increase, correct? In order to take care of those costs that we would have to do down the landfill to maintain the permit that you just mentioned.
That could have been useful.
Because that was...
They have strict requirements on containment of the blowing of the trash, and especially because of the, those plastic bags, or the light material, anyway. And once, when we passed the plastic bag ordinance, they backed off on some really strict requirements they had on us. So, they're not requiring us to do the more expensive fixes right now.
It would also be, is most likely a continuous fix rather than not. I mean, it's not a quick fix. Some of those things are things that we would have to continue to maintain, so it's not like it's going to go away. And it's certainly not something that we can afford at this time to pick up that cost, given what we just talked about.
Well, the taxpayer would protect the cost.
Correct, so that's what I'm saying, it would be passed on to the taxpayer, because that's one of those sorts of funds where...
It's an enterprise...
Enterprise fund. So what you pay into it is what we pay out of it. We don't keep anything behind. And I think, you know, I know that there's difficulty, but it's only been two months that it's actually been in place. And I would ask for people to at least give it, you know, I'm not sure six months, but a year, to actually see if it's going to work, because it takes a while to get used to. I mean, I myself have gone in and went, "Oh my God, I left all my bags in my car." And so I just think it's one of those things that we really have to, you know, and then I go, "No, put everything in the basket, the bags are in the car. I'll put everything from the basket into the bags." And, and, you know, it's something that other communities have done, have been very successful at, even states. I think the state of Vermont has won. And the state of California, you know, yes, it's being contested, but I have a feeling that it, that they will, the whole state will be also going free of those single-use plastic bags. So, I'm just asking for patience and that we see if we can get this and really work together to remind folks to bring their bags. I have little tricks that I do and I'll post some things. And maybe I'll do another little video for the website about, here's my tricks to try to remember to actually take my bags from my house to my car. And then what I do to try to make sure that they don't languish in the car and they actually go in with me to the, to the store. So, I just wanted to make sure we reiterate some of the issues we had with the plastic bags and the potential cost down the line in a different way to folks. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Councillor Connor?
I have a few comments about the plastic bags as well. I agree with Councillor Bedeysen that it's just been two months, so we need to let it go a little bit longer. But one of the questions I have is, at one point, are the retailers going to be cited for not complying? Because two out of the three largest ones have given me the single-use bags more than once in the past two months. And I know one of them said they ran out of them, another one just did that. I've had several people come to me with their bags and say, "Isn't this against the rules?" So at what point are we going to start making them do what they're supposed to be doing?
Once we find out that they're doing it.
Okay.
We've, we've already had code enforcement out looking, so if we catch them, they will be cited.
Any further comments?
So the recommendation is to notify code enforcement, or if you need to notify one of the council members.
Notify code enforcement.
Yeah, but notify code enforcement, they like your phone calls and they will go out and they're very good about it. So, thank you, Councillor Connor.
Any other staff reports?
Here, we go. Also, one, time, uh, for special... Mayor, councillor, in discussions with the DOT, recent meetings that we've had, the project has already begun. We've seen the contractor out there putting up signage and doing a little bit of work underneath the bridge and they've been moving in equipment and things of that nature. The actual, the closure of the bridge will be somewhere at the beginning of April. There's about a two-week window in there that it could be the first, the last week in March or the first week in April where it's fully going to close. In their discussions, they've asked, they've told us that the bridge will be shut down for seven months. And that what we're looking at is that it'll be back, traffic will be back on it around November. And that after that, they're going to do a few more things, but the entire project will be done by the end of the year.
Can you talk a little bit about what we're doing right now?
Okay, we recently put some advertisements in the paper, just letting people know that we're going to be doing a couple of changes to traffic flows on Broadway and Cooper. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be installing north and southbound stop signs at that intersection. We're going to be removing the westbound stop sign to allow traffic to flow a little bit easier through there. We're going to be monitoring it just to make sure that it is going to work. We'll keep a close eye on it. We're going to be removing some stop signs on Pino Salto Street there on Broadway also. And that's just to give traffic a, you know, instead of stop and go, stop and go, just a better chance of flowing through there. And also, we're going to be changing the timing at the intersection of Broadway and Bullard, the timing of the lights going east and west.
Thank you, Mayor. And also the parking is going to be changed?
You actually...
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. I wonder why she was poking me. So at the, the parking that's diagonal is also going to change to parallel?
Yes, yes, we have that also scheduled. Matter of fact, all these improvements will be done first thing tomorrow morning. What we wanted to do is, we have our column that comes out on Tuesdays, and so we put it in there and hopefully tomorrow morning, we can get all this done. We should have it all done probably by about noon tomorrow, and the changes to the parking will also be tomorrow. And we'll also put signs there so people will know. We're going to ask the police department if they can please monitor that, because there might be a few people that still will park, but maybe we can just ask them in the mean, you know, in the forefront, too, you know, that it's changing.
And then, I know that discussion at the last meeting, that the DOT did, is to, hopefully we can put some sort of load or weight restrictions on the city streets and so we don't have the big trucks from some of the companies, the really huge, heavy ones that really would tear up those streets pretty fast. And are we going to be able to put those weight limits on?
We, we've worked through it and we've decided not to start that right now. I think the county might be doing something on market, we don't know. But we haven't done anything on Cooper because they're going to have the signage, we're going to try to work with them as much to get on the bypass, but there's also commerce, the trucks still need to get downtown and stuff, so we just want to try to figure out how we're going to get that done, so we haven't done that. That's not the first, in the first phase of what we do. But like Peter said, we'll be monitoring it continuously, continually in meeting to see how we can best address the issues that come up. But this is the first step of what we're doing.
And is there any further discussion with them after the bridge is closed about putting a temporary stoplight at the Ridge Road, Highway 90 and Cooper Street intersection?
It is information that was discussed at the last meeting. I know they did take it. I am hoping tomorrow, see if they're going to give us a new answer on that. That's one of the questions that I had, I was hoping to get there a little early to discuss that. A couple of other things that we're doing is, we are going to be posting additional signage for the historic downtown. We've been working with the merchants down there and one of the requests that they had is that if we could please put additional signs. So I did work with Sissy McAndrews on this and we came up with 10 new signs with locations and everything. The town will be putting up the ones on Pope Street, on Cooper, but also tomorrow, I'll be taking that request to the DOT if they can put up about five signs for us on their, on their right-of-way.
Okay, and when I move off of this just for a minute and address an issue, I know that there was recently some restriping and lane markings that were entered in at the, as Juniper meets 90 and, well, Hudson and Silver Heights Boulevard. And some of the folks that live up in that area, I myself have encountered it, that if you're in the lane to go straight, you can wait there forever until someone comes up in the right, into the right lane. So, because it's not, the little, the little thingy that tells you whether or not someone's sitting there, it's not where the striping is. And then, also to be somewhat problematic is if you're sitting there to go straight, people turning left from, you know, eastbound Silver Heights, turning left onto Juniper, have almost hit vehicles sitting there, because they now have a much... have almost hit vehicles sitting there because they now have a much narrower a place to go to. And it's anyone that's on Silver Heights has pulled out beyond the stop line, you can't get by them. And then even though the curb was painted up yellow, people are still, I mean, it's just really, if you've got a stack of cars going straight, you can't get by the parked cars and around. I mean, it's really becoming difficult so that people are, people are concerned that they're afraid they're going to get hit head-on by someone turning left because it's just, it's just not enough room right there, especially with the way the state has the Silver Heights marked there. Because people do not, you know, they always go past the markings at that intersection. And I know we don't have any control over that. We only have control on Juniper.
The good news is that the DOT was out here earlier today and the camera was off just there. And so what they did, and so it wasn't adjusted and that traffic flow should be flowing correctly now. So we'll monitor that too. And I did have a few of the neighbors up there send me some emails. So I emailed them back today, letting them know that the DOT had been here today. And we worked with them and according to them, they did correct that as far as that...
Well, the only thing that I might recommend is that we extend the yellow on Juniper at that intersection and the part that is Juniper up a little bit more so we don't get that sort of where you can't get your car by type thing if there's people stacked up to go straight, you know, south onto Hudson. It just, I mean, that's really going to be up to the police department and you guys. And maybe we can encourage the DOT to try to actually repaint those stop lines on Silver Heights so people don't stray into what, right into what's now the right-of-way.
We could send a request in. We could do that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Kano?
I know you've been asked this question before on Cooper Street. Are the speed bands going to be there or are they going to be eliminated?
Actually, according to the chief, because the chief is in charge of traffic and I've discussed this with him, we're going to leave them in, hoping to, you know, keep traffic at a minimum. We're actually also, I'm working with a local contractor to see if we can do some center stripe painting on Cooper Street so that way we don't have people on the straight-of-way trying to pass each other, trying to get through there just a little bit more quicker. We are going to put some no-passing signs and stuff of that nature. We're trying to look at this project in every possible way we possibly can. And like I said, we'll monitor it pretty closely. I think the first two weeks, the first month of the project is going to be really important. But sometimes our best eyes and ears are the community themselves. So if they do see something, if they could just please give us a call.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Pell?
Mayor Council, good evening. My comments are also in regards to the bridge closure. Chief Heidrich wanted me to come by this evening and give you all just a brief overview of the plans that we've come up in, inside the fire department to work around this in regards to our response time because this basically severs, you know, our response to the lower third of the town limits. And so what we're doing, and let me be clear that this, our, our plan is very fluid because just as Mr. Penya said, nobody's really sure of how this is going to go until we're into the middle of it. We've been planning for this back when we thought the start date was in November of last year, you know, and so it's just been, kept getting pushed back. And so what, the basis of what we're planning on doing is creating since a third district. We have two districts here in town and it's divided, basically Pine Street and Swan Street. But south of the bridge, including Hila Street that kind of goes over Chihuahua Hill, will be a District Three. And one of the first things we're doing is our shifts are actually going to change the time when they do shift changes in the mornings. Currently, they change shifts at eight o'clock in the morning. We're going to go to 7:00 AM and try to get a truck with a couple of firefighters on the south side of the construction zone prior to what we feel would be the most active time in the morning. Buses, people getting their kids to school at Harrison Schmidt, people coming into town to go to work. And for at least the first couple of weeks, we're planning on keeping that truck on that side of the bridge all day long. There's work that our guys can do, hydrant maintenance, weed control, things like that in our, in our right-of-ways. We've talked with some businesses on that side of town that are going to allow our guys to, you know, use facilities, have a little bit of office space with some internet connectivity so we can do reports. But at least for the first couple of weeks, we're going to plan on till about 6:00 in the evening, having a staffed truck on that side of the bridge. And it'll be a fire engine, more likely one of our bigger Class A pumpers just because it's a pretty, it's a truck that can respond to all the calls we get, medical, structure fire, grass fire. But then as the, as the project proceeds, if we feel that traffic isn't as bad as, as we anticipate it to be, or as folks learn the routes and learn when to drive and not, when not to drive, then we will modify this as needed. Also in May, when school lets out, you know, we won't have that heavy bus traffic. So that's, that's kind of how we're going to be dealing with, with that part of it. You'll probably see, I don't know if you know, that the pickups that myself, the chief and the fire marshal drive around, we're all also EMTs just like the guys on the line. And so we, if those guys are getting medical calls on the south side of the bridge, rather than sending more apparatus through the relief routes, basically, big trucks, you'll probably see us responding down there because myself and Chief Heidrich are paramedics, my Lambertson and EMT intermediate. And so we will be probably, we can maneuver through traffic probably a little quicker to get help to that south side of the bridge. We are going to keep in very close contact with Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department as they're the district to the south of us. In the event that we have a brush truck that's on that side of the bridge for the day, we'll let them know that so that if a structure fire call comes in, they'll know to assist us with the appropriate apparatus and vice versa. Chief Heidrich, he presented to the Rural Fire Chiefs Association meeting a week ago and a week and a half ago. And one thing that we've realized is that most of the grass fires that happen throughout the summertime and we're getting into that season now is south of, it's all in Tyrone's district historically. They get the largest percentage of grass fires in the county. Every one of the departments that they call for help goes across that bridge, Whiskey Creek, PA, Fort Baird, Santa Rita. And so he presented to them and made sure that they were aware that the bypass is the route to take and for those folks to be very careful responding, even to the point if it's non-emergency response, if that's warranted, to shut down lights and sirens and just drive normal traffic for the safety of themselves and the other drivers on the road, at least till they get back around on Highway 90 and headed south. But, you know, it's going to delay response time for Tyrone when they call for the help. Other than that, you know, like I said, we've been planning on this for a while and we're going to be very fluid in our response, but we definitely want to plan for the worst and hope for the best, I think, in this scenario. So if y'all have any questions of us this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I would like to say a quick thank you. I just returned from Santa Fe attending the first half of the New Mexico government, local government leadership program. I'm part of the municipal league and that's how I attended. It's also the New Mexico Association of Counties, the School Board Association and Leadership New Mexico. And in this time of tight budgets, I really appreciate the town's effort. Although our department is a lot smaller, the education opportunities are still there and I think it's a vital function for all the departments that is provided. And I would just like to say thank you for the support from the council and the town manager and finance department that allows me to go learn. I end up writing grants for other departments. So it's really important for me to learn a wide variety of things about state and local government and this was a priceless opportunity and I thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Moving on to the organizational meeting. First item is election of President Pro Tempore. Do I have any nominations? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to keep Councilor Madison as Mayor Pro Tempore and nominate her to be Mayor Pro Tempore.
Councilor Amon Smith?
I have a second motion.
You accept the nomination?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Thank you.
Is there any other nominations? We have a motion and a second to nominate and elect Councilor Madison as the Mayor Pro Tempore. Just, we don't need a roll call or anything like that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for our Mayor Pro Tempore.
Thank you.
Appointments to, of councils to committees and board positions. I'm proposing keeping everybody in the same spots and I will read those, those positions. With the cemetery board, Councilor Kano. With the library board, Councilor Amon Smith. With the dispatch board, myself with the alternate Jose. With the area transportation authority, Councilor Amon Smith with myself as the alternate. The museum board, Councilor Madison. Under Parks and Recreation, Councilor Ray. Under the Southwest Solid Waste Authority, myself with Councilor Ray as the alternate. And then for staff, Mr. Brown with Peter Penya as the alternate. For the Grant County Water Commission, Mr. Brown with myself as, I don't know if that's with myself as an alternate or actually on that, but I think it's alternate. Southwest Area Workforce Development, we're going to leave vacant. With the Silver City Main Street Project, which is an ex officio position, Mr. Brown with myself. The Chief Elected Officials, Region Four Southwest Area, we're going to leave vacant. For the Health Council, which is advisory, we're going to, I'm going to appoint Mr. Brown. The Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, I'm going to continue to have Mr. Brown there with Councilor Madison as the alternate and with Peter Penya as an additional alternate. And is there any comments or is there any problems with that?
No sir.
Those are the appointments. Councilor Kano?
Mr. Mayor, I have a short recess.
Councilor Amon Smith?
Would you be mayor in a second?
We have a motion and a second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess. Call this meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is a public hearing entitled Approval/Disapproval of Ordinance Number 1238 in ordinance to amend the official zoning map for the following property from the rural district to the commercial district for a tract of land situated in northwest quarter, southwest quarter, west half, northwest quarter of Section 16T18SR14W. NMPM, Grant County, New Mexico, commonly known as 3901 Highway 90 South, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is the owner, Mastercraft Properties LLC. The town council will serve as the hearing board and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communications from any party to this case?
No sir.
You are all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in the hearing.
Please raise your right hand and repeat. I, State Leader, do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that the testimony I am about to give
that the testimony I am about to give
in the matter before this council
in the matter before this council
is the truth, the whole truth
the whole truth
and nothing but the truth
and nothing but the truth
under penalty of perjury
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of the applicant's case. The applicant's staff or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief and states that the opponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff or by opponents to the appeal or application. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record? Staff?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This is Zone Change 15-01, a request to amend the official zoning map to change the subject property at 3901 Highway 90 South from rural zoning, which it currently is, to commercial. The rural district which the property was annexed into is intended to provide for annexed areas that will accommodate agricultural ranching, other uses of that nature until other use is determined or the property owner has another need for the property. This property has until this point been unaddressed. It is vacant. And when Mr. McAlmont came in for the zone change, it was then addressed at that point, which is part of the reason for the long legal description. It was begun as a case with a description of the deed. It had never been previously addressed. So for ease of use, we can just call it 3901 Highway 90 South. This is an aerial of the property. This is the current Mastercraft building that Mr. McAlmont and his group also own. You will notice that he has significant highway frontage if he ever did use, care to have a shared driveway between the two properties. Currently, they're accessing it off of this road, which is Dixon Road. And the county begins to the direct west of the property. So only one small portion of the property is in the county and the remainder is in the town limits. This is another building that you will see in the later photographs. And then this is the large church and school that is also on Highway 90 South. You notice that most of the area around it is undeveloped at this time. This is the zoning map. You'll notice this little triangle of the property is the part that is in the county. They don't have any zoning ordinances. This green color is the rural. This red is highway commercial. And this purple that you will notice to the east of the property is industrial. So the area where the church is, is commercial and Mr. McAlmont, Mastercraft Properties LLC, current property that they use is already highway commercial. This is the view to the site from Highway 90 South. It's part of the area that could possibly be a shared driveway that will go to the New Mexico Department of Transportation. It won't be a town issue so much. If they do choose to access the property from this area, they have to get a driveway permit from the state. This is that small building that I showed you on the other photo and you'll notice that it is used commercially somewhat as storage. To amend the zoning map, the town council and the Planning and Zoning Commission have to make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Number two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation and goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan and error in assumptions about the property, surrounding issues, population forecasts, rate of land consumption or other factors. Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety or general welfare and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. Five, the proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. Six, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. Seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. It is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation that this map amendment, zone change, may be approved based on the following finding. And keep in mind, they only needed to find one. They discussed others that would apply, but they only need to state one in their finding. Number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive Do you have any questions or would you like to see another slide again?
Any questions? Continue.
Okay. That would be the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. McDonald? Does that intercase?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm requesting the zoning change based on the finding that the amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
No, sir. Just kind of like.
Council Raymond Smith?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm just really curious about what your plans are.
We currently don't have any plans really, but we knew we would have to go through this formality to change the zoning. We did it 10 years ago on the parcel that we're in now, so it's just a formality that we wanted to get out of the way.
Any other questions? Does that conclude your case in chief?
Yes, thank you.
Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
No, sir.
Does any, does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness?
Yes, sir.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
How does the board decide? Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 1238, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for the following property, from the rural district to the commercial district for a tract of land situated in the northwest quarter, southwest quarter, west half, northwest quarter of Section 16, Township 18 South, Range 14 West, NMPM, Grand County, New Mexico, commonly known as 3901 Highway 90 South, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is, the applicant is the owner, Mastercraft Properties LLC, with the staff recommendation and finding number one. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan.
Council Kano?
Mr. Mayor, I would second the motion as stated.
We have a motion second that is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Do we need a roll call? Roll call.
Council Kano? Council Ray?
Yes.
Council Raymond Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. The public hearing is concluded. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the annual New Mexico Brewers Guild celebration called Toad Fest Tap Takeover. Event scheduled for April 11th, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the 200 block of Bullard Street in front of Little Toad Creek on 200 North Bullard Street. Silver City, New Mexico, sponsored Little Toad Creek Brewery. Number one, DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061, license number 63004. And number two, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061, license number 67021. Mr. Costello?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and town staff. Thank you for having us. Just as, thank you for considering this public celebration permit. As a reminder, these permits are, allow us to serve alcohol off-site, off of our licensed premises. And in the case of the Toad Fest Tap Takeover, this is quickly becoming one of the largest craft beer events. It's on the New Mexico Brewers Guild schedule and in helping develop, I think, Silver City as a destination for craft beer in the southwest part of the state. We plan on having over 20 beers on tap. Last year, we had standing room only and had to turn people away. And so the seeking of the public celebration permit and the usage of the rideaway in front of our building will allow us some sort of key safety concerns to be addressed as far as they don't have people onsite being served in a safe and responsible manner and most of all, having fun and enjoying the day. We've communicated with the other folks in town with their events, the Gateway Community Celebration. Both parties are very excited about the collaboration and co-marketing in our events. So we're really expecting to have a great turnout and are hoping to have the public celebration permits facilitate that. We have done a similar permit process before and here to answer my questions.
Any question, Council Bedesen?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is I noticed that it's actually larger than Little Toad. The area that you want to fence off is longer than the Little Toad Brewery. So it's not, it is directly in front of your property, but it actually goes down the street quite a bit.
Yeah, we request the street closure for the, that block in front of us, mainly for safety so that when cars trying to park in front of, you know, pedestrians were walking into the event. The fenced-off area is about 100 feet, which goes about to that first lamp post. So it's actually, we're just before the storefront there for the Pink Store North and then across the street to where the old Buffalo Bar storefront is.
So, okay, so, I know some else might have another question about that, but I'm, and in your, in one place you say the sidewalks will be open, then you say with the exception in front of you. So are the sidewalks going to be open on both sides down to where you are or is that going to be cut off from the Pink Store?
No, what we've done is, is immediately where our store or where ours starts is that's where we've, we've had the sidewalk closure. So you actually enter in, entering in on the sidewalk on that side, on our side of the block, is, that's where our entrance is, is right in front of our building.
Okay.
So it still allows access. The difficulty in having the front of our, the sidewalk in front of our building would be for monitoring alcohol in front of the building there. So that's the only, only closure there.
Okay. But it does go down, I mean, the sidewalks open down to the Little Toad Creek Brewery on the north side?
On the north side, on our.
Meaning on the north side of going north on Bullard?
Correct, yeah. The only, only spot where the sidewalk is actually closed is immediately in front of our storefront. Yeah, and that's actually where we put the, and that's the entrance point. So we have a place where we can monitor entrance and egress from, from the area. That's a really important detail for, for the alcohol service.
Okay. And so I guess for me, like Council Kano, I'm concerned about ADA access and ensuring that if this is, if this entire, the sidewalk right in front of you is going to be closed, which I can understand the reasoning behind it, is ensuring that that ramp is in no way blocked on that side because that would be a violation, I mean, period. I mean, there's no way to block off that ramp on that, on the side of where Broadway is, you know, the access ramp?
Right.
Yeah, and I think that that's critical to ensure that people or anyone else that's in the vicinity that may work for you is not blocking that off and making it difficult for folks with disabilities to get up and use that ramp.
Absolutely, yes.
And then I do have a question about the four-foot fence because my understanding is, is that you cannot, you have to ensure as a license holder, in order to retain your license and not have it removed, is that it needs to ensure that you cannot pass over, under, or through the fence? A four-foot fence is quite small enough to pass over. Are you going to, is it going to be double fenced so that there's, there's like a area where there's, you know, the no man's land where they can't, you know, get in because, you know, that's usually what you see when there's a smaller fence like that. I mean, I'm concerned that they will be passing over, even if you have security, they can't watch everybody on all four corners of a really, you know, 100-foot long
Right.
fence. So have you given thought to that?
Yeah, we, it hasn't been an issue so far for us, but I mean, we certainly can, we look at our fencing and do additional fencing. I think that's, that's a reasonable request that we can, we can accommodate. I mean, it's, what we've done in the past has been just the four-foot orange fencing, but we're.
People get a little excited, you know, and so, you know, and give the fact that the sidewalk on that side is pretty high.
Yeah.
It's not four feet anymore. It's maybe two feet.
Right.
To be able to hand it over because somebody can stand down and get some. So something that, at least on that one side, I would like you to consider and especially, I mean, I know that you said that you would have roaming security, but once again, I mean, if you were crowded last time, I can only imagine how crowded it would be.
Right.
So that's it for now, Mayor, in case someone doesn't answer another, ask another question I have. Thank you.
Any questions? Council Raymond Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Costello, I just want to ask if you have plans to communicate with your merchant neighbors about what is going to be going on?
Yeah, we, you know, I have not personally been out to talk with folks. I know that Teresa has talked with, with some of the folks in the area, but I, so I don't have a, I can't speak for who individually has been in contact. I know in prior events, we, we definitely do go out and talk with everybody and have gotten a good response, so.
Thank you. I think, you know, good neighbor policy if that information is really important in this kind of event. Because really, it's going to close down a lot of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion. Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for doing this. It, it does bring in a lot of people and it's very enjoyable for the people to be down there also and having a nice cold one. And I agree with Council Bedesen, make sure of your four-foot fence, make sure that you are well aware that nothing goes across. And with that, I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the annual New Mexico Brewers Guild celebration called Toad Fest Tap Takeover. Event scheduled for April 11th, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the 200 block of Bullard Street in front of Little Toad Creek on 200 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Sponsor, Little Toad Creek Brewery. Number one, DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061, license number 63004. And number two, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061, license number 67021.
Council Raymond Smith?
Second, the motion has stayed.
We have a motion second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-07, a resolution supporting an application for the New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program MAP funding.
Mayor, Council, this resolution will give us the opportunity to submit an application for MAP funding through the DOT. This year, what we're doing is we're going to try to resubmit the same project that we submitted last year, which is College Avenue, which is Phase Two from Cooper Street West to B Street. The application will be looking at repaving, new sidewalks, curb and gutter, 88 ramps, signage, and striping. The total application cost for the project is $498,362. There is a 75-25 match to this, so our, our match would be around $124,590. I did talk to Mr. Brown already and if we would be awarded, it would be available.
It would be included in next year's budget?
Yeah, if, if, we usually hear around June or July if we do get funded, so it would be something that, our plans are around 75% complete, so it would roughly be about, about 30 to 45 days before we could get our plans completed. So this project won't start towards, till the end of the year.
Any other questions? Council Bedesen?
Thank you, Mayor. So like other portions of college, does this have concrete?
Yes.
So that is the reason for the cost and not doing more than going to, from Cooper to B because of the concrete cost of pulling it out?
Yeah, the entire project amount is, is over a million dollars to do all the way to E. So we figured our best chance of getting MAP money is if we phase it. There's only so much money that is allowed through the, through the MAP funding and basically each municipality and county within the district is after that money. So we feel, we figure that we have a good application and have a good chance of getting funded.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Tell me your hate of motion.
Mr. Magister?
Council Raymond Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-07, a resolution supporting an application for New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program, MAP funding.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion as second as read into the record. Any further discussion? We have a motion as second as read into the record. Roll call.
Council Smith?
Aye.
Council Raymond Smith?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Kano?
Motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second motion standing, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.